Good evening, everyone. We are going to call the City Council meeting for Monday, November 3rd, 2025 to order. At this time, if we can invite Reverend Dave Robinson from Genesis Community Ministries to come up and lead us in prayer.
Testing. Good evening, everyone. Let's bow our heads as we ask God's blessing on this City Council meeting this afternoon. Father, we pause to pray and we pause to say thank you for all that you have done for us. We want to thank you for our city and all that it provides for us and for keeping us from tornadoes, earthquakes, and various devastations. But as we are thankful for our city tonight and our more or less safe city, we pause to pray for those who may not experience what we are experiencing. We pray tonight for the people of Ukraine, for the people of Russia, for the people of Israel, for the people of Gaza, for the people of Venezuela, and the people of Nigeria, and for those in South Sudan, in El Fashir, where there are thousands of refugees and in recent weeks, thousands have been killed by the militia. We pray for the people of Jamaica, who have lost nearly everything that they own, and also the people of Cuba. Father, help us to be conscious of the goodness of God in all lives in this city, and when we awake at mornings to say, "Thank you, Lord, for allowing me to see another peaceful day." We pray for Mayor and his committee men, and for every official that administrates in this city. And as we do so, help us to seek justice for all. Help us to be merciful or to love mercy, and help us all to walk humbly before God. Micah, Chapter 6, Verses 7 through 8. So, Lord, I ask that you will hear our prayer as we humbly bow before you tonight, and with thanksgiving, celebrate another City Council meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The City Council will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, revere liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have public comment. If you please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon the council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matter which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Skyler Evans.
Mayor is just a project. You guys have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Next, we have Margaret Creighton.
For Committee Church Oldest, I am the pastor.
If we can have you come up to the microphone. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, I'd like to thank the mayor and thank the aldermen and everyone. My husband and I were the pastors of Committee Church Oldest, and we sent a letter for the handicap signs, to get handicap signs, and also for the drainage in the back of our church because when it rains, the water comes in. So, we need the drainage to be taken care of. So, that's what I was going to say.
Thank you.
And I thank God for the ones from Committee Church Oldest in the back to support tonight as well. Thank you.
Next, we have Lindsay Holden. Is Lindsay here? Was it Hadden? I'm sorry.
I'm just here for the approval of the home ordinance for the conditional use permit.
She's here for 343 South May, but just if she had any questions for them.
Okay. Thank you. Kenesha Hill?
Hello, everyone. I'm a proud mom of a Michigan player, Jair Hill, and I just came to give the mayor a little gift.
Okay. Just for the record, I think it was a week ago on Saturday night, my phone seemed to be blowing up a little bit then. Somebody. Oh, boy. That's a good. Yes, I responded back with a couple texts, but it got real quiet, I think, after that. So, is something going to the Baron family or something? Tell him thank you. All right, I gotta get my act going now. So, that's a lot. Robert Ellington Snipes?
To the mayor and to the distinguished members of the council, and all it takes to make this city is probably going to be one of the shortest comments I make tonight because I came here to support Pastor Creighton and the Community Church of Holderness, but it seems that things are already being done. So, I'm going to end with the last two words of that extended state prayer of Pastor Dave Robinson. Thank you.
A lot tonight, Mr. Snipes. A short message from you and a bunch, a lot of Michigan for me. All right. We will now move on to Item 5. Roll call, City Council.
Present.
Noble, Johnson, Cobb's.
Here.
Here.
Nivarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tally.
Present.
Singa.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
Malone Marshall.
Here.
Prude.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
We do have a quorum. Department heads?
Kidwell.
Here.
LaRoche.
Here.
Rogers.
Kubel.
Present.
Landwehr.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Bigash.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Beasley.
Here.
King.
Here.
Roswell.
Brewer Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next, is there a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, October 20th, 2025?
So moved, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Singa. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Sting.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
The minutes are approved for Monday, October 20th, 2025. Next is petitions, Item 7A.
PB 2022-4-3, an ordinance approving a final plat for a major subdivision for Quick Trip located at the northwest corner of Route 4552 and Riverstone Parkway in Kankakee.
Director King, if you can enlighten us on this?
Sure. Engineering has been recommended for approval. I did take this back to Planning Board just to make sure that we had a kind of a fresh approval. It was recommended for approval by a vote of 4-0 at the October 21st Planning Board meeting. There is representative from Quick Trip in the audience today if we want a quick update on timeline. Otherwise, that's it. Thank you.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is Item 7B.
PB 2025-10-2, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a commercial short-term rental located at 441 West Hawkins Street in Kankakee.
Director King, this went through Planning Commission. If you'd like to tell us how that went?
Sure. This is a single-family dwelling proposed to be operated as a short-term rental. It was recommended by a vote of 4-0 at the October 21st Planning Board meeting.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Marzak. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for approval tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments? Alderman Marzak?
Just like to say that there was a parking issue that's come up with the driveway in between since this is a split lot, but I've been talking to Mr. Coy, and he's addressing those issues where I believe, you know, they won't be a problem.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is Item 7C.
PB 2025-10-3, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a major home occupation, esthetician, located at 343 South May Avenue in Kankakee.
Director King, if you could fill us in from the Planning Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed home esthetician business. It was presented at the October 21st Planning Board meeting and was recommended by a vote of 4-0.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Singa. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is Item 7D.
PB 2025-10-4, an ordinance amending Chapter 8 and Appendix A of the Kankakee zoning ordinance.
Is there a motion? Well, actually, we did not have that. Did that go through Planning Commission?
It did.
Can you give us an update on that real quick, too? Thank you.
These changes are various clarifications and some minor additions to all the commercial district regulations, as well as Appendix A, which is the list of all the permitted and conditional uses in the city of Kankakee, and to basically make them more consistent across each one. There were some missing regulations in C-2 and a regulation in C-3 but not listed on the table, and so there were just some cleanups, mostly cleanups and some minor additions. It was recommended at the October 21st Planning Board meeting by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you, Director King. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next, we'll move on to Item 8, Communications. Item 8A.
City of Kankakee is requesting permission to host their City of Kankakee Christmas Parade on Saturday, December 13th, 2025, beginning at 4:30 PM.
Is there a motion to approve this communication?
So moved.
Want to make sure where that was coming from. Alderman Marzak has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Nivarez. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Singa.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Communication is approved. Item 8B.
City of Kankakee and Elderwoman Kelly Johnson are requesting street closure of East Merchant
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb's. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Communication is approved. There is no standing committee reports tonight. We'll move on to item 10, report of officers. Item 10 A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $623,381.64.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the City of Kankakee?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the report of officers, place the money in the proper accounts, and pay the bills in the amount of $623,381.64.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Ossenga. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills?
Mayor, I do have one.
Alderman Ossenga.
Check 84812, essential smoothies, $10,000.
That is part of the, that came out of the incentive for the new, they just opened up this past week, had their kind of quasi-opening Saturday morning. We provided them a benefit to help with some of their interior build out there at the Majestic Center.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
I abstain as to check 84818 to First Trust Bank, 84824 to Joe's Automotive, 84826 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 84828 to Lenora Noble, 4004 to Piggish Engineering, and 1515 to Piggish Engineering, each to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye, but I abstain from check number 84794, will conflict the interest.
Thank you. Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the City of Kankakee are approved. Next is item 10 B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $732,430.27.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderman Ossenga. Any questions or comments regarding the bills for environmental services? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
I abstain as to check 37063 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 37074 to PSI Construction, 4010 to Glady Plumbing, 4015 to Piggish Engineering, each to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
The report of officers for environmental services utility are approved. Next is item 11, unfinished business. Item 11 A.
Ordinance approving a Class V liquor license at the location of 604 North Entrance Avenue in Kankakee, and this is second reading.
So we had this for first reading at our last meeting. This is the location that has passed through the Planning Commission with the proper zoning and everything that's needed there. This allows us to issue the last video gaming license and enact that for this location. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Prude. Any questions or comments? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
No.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Ten ayes, one nay, one abstention.
Ordinance is approved. Next we'll move on to item 12, new business. Item 12 A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 172, entitled No Parking Zones on Streets and Alley's designated of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, rescinding ordinance number 1971-17, no parking at any time in the area in front of 481 North Harrison Avenue.
So as you'll see, the next one that's coming up, Coach Goll brought this to our attention, in order to approve the handicap spots, we had to take an ordinance off the books. So this is eliminating the no parking so that we can provide a handicap parking. Is there a motion to suspend the rules or allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there any questions or comments? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12 B.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, two handicap parking signs established at 481 North Harrison Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passages that would allow for the passage of ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Any questions or comments? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12 C.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, establishing handicap parking at 556 South Elm Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Cobb's. Any questions or comments? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12 D.
An ordinance granting a one-year extension to a conditional use permit for a drive-through at 344 to 352 West Court Street in Kankakee.
Director King, I'll let you explain, but this is something that had passed and some time has lapsed. If you can identify the location and what was planned for there and why we need to extend.
Um, I don't have all the details about it, but I think it was a mixed retail development. There's a drive-through as part of it that needed a conditional use permit. It was granted. I think it got approved on November 4th, which expires tomorrow. So this is just an extension that, the applicant is intending to still continue with this project, but is working on other projects currently and is hoping that this will come forward next year during the construction season.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
I'll admit I was off one. Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12 E.
An ordinance approving a development agreement with Wine by the River LLC located at 810 West Station Street in Kankakee.
So this is, I prefer this to Executive Director Brewer Watson. If you just, we gotta fix that mic, I know. There you go. This is one of our development agreements that has gone through several different committees. If you can just enlighten us on this.
Yeah, it was brought to the Economic Development Committee on September 25th, and the terms that were brought forward for the 810 West Station Street Wine by the River business, which you have, by you, I mean council, have already awarded a liquor license for in previous months. They have secured their lease, and they are doing a rehab project with the estimated cost of $52,622.22 worth of improvements to open up their wine bar at 810 West Station Street. This project is in a TIF district, but this is not a TIF incentive. Par our usual incentive, we are going to be giving them $10,000 for the improvements. And again, once they have these funds, they will be getting their project and the completion, estimated completion date is March of 2026. They would like to get moving on that. And it was approved at the Economic Development Committee on September 25th to bring to council, so.
And again, this will be paid out of line item that we created, the $100,000 incentive line item for projects that don't quite fit into maybe a TIF criteria. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Lewis. Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Local.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12 F.
An ordinance approving a first amendment to a development agreement between the City of Kankakee and 505 South Skyler LLC.
So this also came through Economic Development Committee. Director Brewer Watson, you want to update it?
Yeah, and I'll turn over to you for the final details, but this was brought to Economic Development Committee due to the change of the project. Some of the improvements that were originally agreed to on the facade have changed due to the material of the brick underneath the facade when they got into that. So that was not a part of the original development agreement, and so the developer came back and presented the new project and the updated project costs at the last Economic Development Committee meeting. And so we have some amendments that we need to make, and also through that conversation, there were some conditions that the Economic Development Committee had to make sure that the facade improvements happen, similar to what is wanted, the desired outcome of lighting, the gooseneck lighting, landscaping, and then making sure that there is a continuation of the color of siding all the way into the north-facing part of the building. So in the amendment, there are exhibits that have the updated project costs to it and the updated rendering so that you can see all of the placement of the lighting and the material color choices, and that it will be continued all the way to the north side of the building. And so the timeline has changed too, to have substantial completion of the facade and then landscaping. I think everything has to be wrapped up on May 31st of 2026. And so that would allow them to be able to secure the $100,000, but they don't secure the final $50,000 until they have secured a tenant, that they will have to come back to Economic Development Committee and through council again for that final tranche of the incentive dollars. So if there's other details, please speak into that.
I think you covered everything. The only thing I would add is it extends the procurement of a tenant for the third space till December 31st of 2026. And again, still has, if it's different than what was originally, then it has to come to city council for approval of any tenant. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the approval of this ordinance tonight?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve subject to changes to the language to require the landscaping to be completed before the developer is eligible for the facade completion incentive.
Do we have to do that in the second part, the second reading, or?
Yeah, I think we just take a vote on the motion to suspend, and then.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, so.
I make that motion.
So we, we, a motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, yes.
Okay, we have a motion from Alderman Byrne to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Can you say Aaron again?
I was following Marzak's. What? Who's on first?
I was doing so well. That Michigan thing had me all worked up for a while.[1104.12]
Director Bria Watson, if you can explain this development agreement also.
Yes.
This is a new one before us that has come through economic development also, correct?
Yep, so this was brought forward to the Economic Development Committee a couple of times. One was for the license for the outdoor patio that council has already approved. And this is for the incentive for the improvements for Lafayette Building Company to develop and build out the space for the tenant that has already been identified. And the improvements that they are, the cost of the improvements are $345,653.63. So following in line with our incentive percentage and through lots of discussion at economic development, the offer is $50,000. This will be using TIF funds for this project based on the incremental funds that we already have available in the TIF district. $25,000 will be distributed upon the agreement being secured with signatures and then a balance of $25,000 upon completion of the project. Clearance required for occupancy from building and code, planning and zoning and fire department. The rest of the project will be financed through the developer. They will secure that themselves. So this will be, we'll have to have determination for eligible TIF funds. And so that process will happen internally with city to make sure that we have all of that documented and prepared for audit when that time comes. So this again was brought forward on the last week's Economic Development Committee and was approved unanimously to come to council for approval.
Thank you. Here's a motion to suspend the rules that allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight.
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez.
Yes.
We'll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Abstained to avoid a potential conflict.
Aaron.
Abstained to avoid a potential conflict.
Alon Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, two abstentions.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments? We'll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Abstained to avoid a potential conflict.
Aaron.
Abstained to avoid a potential conflict.
Alon Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, two abstentions.
Ordinance is approved. There is no appointments tonight, so we'll move on to item 13, motions and resolutions. Item 13A.
Resolution authorizing the renewal of the City of Kankakee's property and casualty and law enforcement liability policy for the 12-1 2025 through 12-1 2026 policy year issued by the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust for the amount of $952,241.
I'm going to turn this over to City Manager Kubo. She will outline this as she's worked diligently on the renewal process for both of our next items for insurance.
Thank you, Mayor. As we come to you this time of year typically to do our renewal process, we are renewing again with the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust. I don't want to mess that title up. It's nice and long. We have been with them now with, we're on liability this time. So with liability, we've been with them over four years. The increase was 6.88%, which we felt was pretty good in the current insurance market. As many of us know, those have been double digits across the board in lots of places. The dollar increase is $61,309.65 from last year. We are pleased to come to you with the same identical deductibles as what we've had before. We are able to keep those in place at this time and the coverage is identical to what we have had before. So we feel like this is a really, a really great renewal and we've been pleased with this coverage.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the renewal of the property and casualty and law enforcement liability policy?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Tally. Any questions or comments? We'll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Alon Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13B.
Resolution authorizing the renewal of the City of Kankakee's workers' compensation policy for the 12-1 2025 through 12-1 2026 policy year issued by the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust for the amount of $1,279,356.
I will again turn this over to City Manager Kubo. If you could outline it, this policy for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we are renewing with IC RMT. We've actually been with them for workers' compensation for, it'll actually be five years in January because we started with them in January of 2021. We were, we've had, we're city, so we have a lot of things that happen when we are going to provide the services that we do. So we have had some experience. So we were, I was more nervous about this one when it came in than I was on liability. But we were very pleased with a 7.1% increase on workers' compensation for a total dollars of $84,316 additional. We did have a couple of factors of this one. One was, like I just mentioned, lost experience. We did have our, basically our typical experience, but we do have experience because we are a city. We did have an increase to payroll. Obviously wages go up and then that is the calculation of how workers' compensation is then calculated based off of payroll. And within this world, you know, this has a lot of connection clearly to the medical side and the medical side has been double digits for nearly everybody in our sector. So I feel very pleased to bring you a 7.1% renewal and all same parties of which we've been dealing with and a solid insurance company.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing for the renewal of the workers' compensation policy?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments regarding the workers' compensation policy? We'll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Alon Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution authorizing the renewal of the workers' compensation policy is approved. We do have a need for an executive session tonight under FABILCS 122 C2 under 14D under union contracts. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Cobb's. We'll call, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Alon Marshall.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
We are now in executive session. Okay, we are out of executive session. Is there a motion to return to open session?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, a second from Alderman Tully. Roll call.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Loe Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
We have twelve present, two absent. We do have a quorum. We do have action resulting from executive session, item sixteen one.
Motion to approve the side letter of agreement by and between the City of Kankakee and the International Association of Firefighters, A F L C I O C L O Local six fifty-three.
Is there a motion to approve the side letter?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Osenga. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
No.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Loe Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, one nay.
Motion approved. The side letter is approved. At this time, we will move on to city council member comments. You're smiling, Mayor. Because I'm looking at your seatmate. She has a comment. Alderman Swanson.
I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night at five thirty here in this building is the public safety meeting.
Alderman Marzak?
Sure. I'd just like to remind everybody, there's forty days till the Christmas parade. This will be the fourth year of the parade, and due to David Guzman, who's on the Christmas team, seeking out some additional funding that does not cost the city a dime. In the past, we've, we've been fortunate to have Home Plumbing and Heating provide the prize money, which is three hundred, two hundred, and one hundred for the prizes. They're still going to do that this year, but due to David Guzman's research and acquisition of some more donations, this year, we're going to try and put a little magic in Christmas and increase the prize money to a thousand dollars for first place.
Woo.
Five hundred for second, and two hundred and fifty dollars for third. And the hopes, you know, we may not get that money next year, but the hopes is, you know, people actually go all out, and every entry will have an opportunity to pass by the judges, and hopefully somebody will get a little magic gift for Christmas.
Forty days.
Forty days.
All right. Same weather as today?
I think it's supposed to be sixty degrees, actually. No rain, no rain.
Any other city council comments? Alderman Jones.
Thank you. Mayor, I just want to say my condolences to the Banks family. I know everybody may not know Tony, but you know, that was found in the, in the river the other day. You know, if everybody will probably remember who he is walking around, you know, we all, we all knew him, and it's kind of, it's kind of touching, you know, to see him. Kind of figured out today. I didn't really even have a name to everybody, put it in my head, but I'm going to just be also in prayer for the firefighters, because, you know, guys dealing with that. And it's really, really important, you know, for what I do and my other things that I have to do in life. And I know it's really hard on first responders, seeing what they're seeing. A lot of times, we just take it for granted they're doing their job, but they're still human, you know, and we're praying for the family. We're praying for those that were even there to have to deal with that. He's a good little buddy of mine. I kind of, I liked him a lot, and I'm praying for their family. And also, I want to say big kudos also to the city councils and how we continue to work together. And when we have issues that come on different sides of town, I want to thank all the council members. When you call them, they'll come and be with you when situations has arose in your neighborhood. And I just want to say thanks to those that have come over. And hopefully, we can, you know, there's some national things going on. I'm trying to keep it broad, but hopefully, we can come to a consensus in our town. But truly, I'm really proud to not only be from Kankakee, even, you know, what is going on that collectively, I believe that in our community at large, that people are coming together, and, you know, hopefully, we can get through this. And I'm keeping it real broad, because it's pretty hard on some people, and I'm hoping that, you know, we'll get through this, and it'll be all right. But thank you all again for the support, and we're looking forward to Christmas, all right? So, thank you again, Mayor.
Any other city council member comments?
Yeah, Ald, uh, Mayor.
Alderman Prude.
I just want to thank the city for allowing me to go to Cities United. There'll be some things that, that's going to come up, that I'm hoping that the city council will be open-minded to some of the things that we're going to talk about that's needed to help our young people in the City of Kankakee. So we will be talking about some things at a later date. Thank you.
Any other city council? Department head comments. Director Pur Watson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I talked about this at Community Development, but just for everyone else. Tomorrow, there is a St. Mary's Mobile Food Pantry. It is at three o'clock, and it's at St. Rose's parking lot in, right off of Station Street. It's at three o'clock. People usually start lining up about two thirty, so I just wanted to put that out there. They try to do the mobile food pantry on the first Tuesday of every month, and so as we have the food pantry list on E C D A, and if you need that, let me know. We can get you a copy of that. United Way has an amazing list, and so we go to theirs. So if you just check out their website, too, they're keeping theirs updated, so you can see it electronically. I do see it going around on Facebook and Instagram as well. So if you need that information, it's out there. You can also reach out to me and the E C D A team. We can get that to you, too. But I wanted to let you know about the immediate one that is tomorrow. And then E C D A is hosting a community conversation Wednesday night. As we enter the holiday season, talking about grief during the holidays and some skills and tools that people can adopt to help them through that time of grief. And that is Wednesday at five o'clock at City Life Center, and that is a partnered event with Uplifted Care. So just wanted to pass that along to you, so you can share that information. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other department head comments? Okay. Move on to Mayor's update. I just got a couple things I want to echo. Was with Alderman Prude last week for three days down at the Cities United convening down in Louisville, Kentucky. It's always good to go there, because you do learn quite a bit of things. I actually thought it was good for me, because sometimes you get into the day-to-day running of the city and some things, and it's, it's good to kind of get away and understand what some of our biggest issues are that we have to deal with here in the city to keep some things moving forward. So thank you, Alderman Prude, for attending that, and then we'll give you an update with all the team that went down there. We had a pretty large contingent that went down, so that was good. Also, I want to just give a announcement that we will be doing the fifth annual turkey giveaway on Saturday, November twenty-second. Sign up for that. Will not be till Monday, a week from tonight. We'll have that online, or they can call into the mayor's office and sign up for that. That, again, is for City of Kankakee residents. And we're hoping each year, we, we're fortunate to be able to continue to give away more than each turkeys each year, and that includes the side stuffing, cranberries, corn, green beans. We're hoping to give away over three hundred turkeys this year, because we had, again, we've had the sponsorship with Walmart, Burkhardt's, and Jewel. But this year, Coral Apartments has stepped up again, and they increased their donation significantly again, so we could give away more turkey. So I want to give a shout-out to them also. And so that'll be happening. Keep an eye out for that a week from today. And then lastly, a lot of times, we, we talk about the police and some different things, but I do keep the police in your prayers, too, but in particular, our fire department. They had a rough weekend. Obviously, with the body recovery that had to happen on Saturday, and then last night, I believe there was three different fires within about a two-and-a-half-hour period. That's a lot on the team, and one of those fires had a significant injury. So just keep them in your prayers. That's hard, and sometimes, I think, very emotionally draining mentally and physically to have to deal with so much in a, in a small weekend. So keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and for the people that were affected from the fires and the unfortunate tragic deaths. So that's all I have tonight. It is now eight ten. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Loe Marshall, second from Alderman Prude. All in favor?
Aye.